Testing. Can you hear me? America, can you hear me?
Yes, Margo, we can hear you. Sorry about that. I hadn't unmuted the room yet.
Thank you, okay. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. We'll call ourselves to order. This is the AST School Board Governance Committee meeting. Today is Thursday, August 29th at 11:00 a.m. President of the boardroom is your Chair Carl Jacobs. Member Lessons, member Donnelly. And online, we have members. Well, yeah, we have Bellamy and
Holman.
Holman. And we're waiting for member Wilson. Member Higgins is currently wandering and may return.
Wilson just is joining as well.
Perfect. So we have two-thirds of our committee. We'll start now that we've called ourselves to order and done a roll call for the board with others in attendance today, starting with Marty Lang, Human Resource Officer. Introductions.
America Sullivan, Executive Assistant.
I'm Chief Financial Officer.
Andy Ratliff, Chief Financial Officer, Jerre Wright, Superintendent.
Viana Caro, Assessment and Evaluation.
Kirsten Johnson, Deputy Chief of Schools.
Corey, teacher.
Welcome all. All right, we've done introductions, we've done a roll call, we'll get started with our agenda. Item B1 is Policy Review, a routine section of our tri-annual routine review of our work policy, which is a best practice for our governance. First up is BB 2210. Ms. Sullivan, could you bring up that work policy for those here in the online?
2210.
2210. This is administrative leaving absence of schoolwork policy. Any requests for revision or updates from the committee? Hearing seeing none, we'll move on to 2230, representative and deliberative groups. Hearing seeing no revisions requested, we'll move on to 2250, Teacher in Charge, Principal Designee. Hearing seeing no requests for revision, we'll move on to 2300, Conflict of Interest. The one I wanted to flag for discussion for the committee here is, I just know from my other roles professionally that there is a designation between an actual and an apparent or perceived conflict of interest. I'm not sure if we want to get into that kind of granular sort of language in our conflict of interest or policy, but I did want to flag that those things exist and that we as board members should be cognizant that while something may not be an actual conflict of interest, there could be perceived or potential conflicts of interest as well. Those are actual terms that are often considered in other areas. Any requested changes to 2300? Hearing seeing none, we'll move on to Oh, great.
Thank you. I just had a comment and a question, I guess. So when it comes to conflict of interest, we do fall under the assembly, right, or the municipality, and there is a process that we have to go through, right?
So the board policy references Alaska Statute 2920010. And it has to do with our oath of office. There, I believe there is municipal code language related to conflict of interest, but I can't speak with any authority right now as to whether or not and how that applies to us. But if we would like to table this and do some further research, we can bring this back next month.
Yeah, I would like to do that. Oh, I'm sorry. If I can, if I can ask the committee to consider bringing this one back because I don't see the reference to the municipality on this. Because there is a process, and if it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. But if it does, I think it should be reflected here as well. Thank you.
Reasonable request. So we note that we'll bring back 2300 for next month?
Yes.
All right. And then member Higgins has joined us at 11:05. Welcome. Any comments on 2300 before we move on?
The only thing I'll use to be involved in forcing this with the meeting, so I know that aspect of it. And the idea is that real perceived conflict of interest, if you jeopardize things, doesn't prevent you from speaking. It does prevent you from having any authority in the action. We had a problem in this issue where we have a purchasing agreement, purchasing deal that the involving a contractor who was a conflict of interest superintendent and did not go through the board. So I want to make sure that our review of these policies recognize it doesn't prevent the individual from being engaged. They have to fully disclose it, and they have to have authority above that to make the decision. They can't be involved in making a decision. But if it's in the best interest of the school district, in this case it was, by the way. So I don't have a problem with that. But that's where I want to make sure this policy is fully appreciative of those types of issues. And I think offhand, this was a violation of municipal authority as well. But that's a separate issue. We'll get to cover that in an audit process.
When you say you're talking about, just for clarity's sake, member Higgins, you're talking about a violation. Was this recently or?
This would have been before the superintendent.
Okay, got it. Just wanted to
Put that on the record for his benefit.
Perfect.
It was not him.
Great, okay, sounds good. Appreciate that clarity. We'll bring this back in our September meeting. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Sullivan, we can move on to BP 3000, Concepts and Roles. Member Lessons did send in some language in advance. There are copies in the room, and we'll discuss the proposed language now. Member Lessons, did you want to walk us through what you're thinking?
Sure, and maybe, yeah, maybe if you could just pull that one up. So I only realized that this was under Policy Review on a Tuesday, so I spent a little bit of time looking at it. Otherwise, I would have sent this out in advance, further in advance. Really, it was an opportunity to reflect on the student outcomes-focused governance model that we have adopted and also the literal investment that we have made in the evidence-based model analysis of district financial needs repeatedly, going back many years. And also our reflection on the value, I thought, that was added with the additional listening session that we gave the members of the public this past February. So the language that I have suggested here, and certainly open to other board members' suggestions, really speaks to that need to align our expenditures with the goals and guardrails to encourage dedicated opportunities for stakeholder feedback. Might go line by line. Those are the biggest sort of intents of these changes. So maybe we can just allow individuals the opportunity to read this and ask questions or raise suggestions.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. So, yeah, Ms. Sullivan, if we could scroll through slowly for folks to wrap their minds around these proposed changes, and then we'll give folks some time to digest and ask questions.
And if it's preferable to, again, defer this further until the next meeting, that is also an option.
Yeah, and reading through this ahead of the meeting, I think this really speaks to what we're actually doing. It just expands the language versus makes any significant changes in current or goals or directives or path to action, correct?
Yeah, actually, really, the one thing that could be considered a substantive change is if you go into the role of the school board. Item one, previously it read, "The school board solicits public input on educational needs and utilizes that information for budget decisions." Really, this says that instead that we're going to get student outcome data from the superintendent's office and then also receive community input via values and visions. Because I don't know that public input on educational needs is going to be as precise or as accurate as the superintendent's and sort of key staff interpretation of educational needs. The public will certainly have values that they hold dear and visions, but but maybe not a granular sense of educational needs. So the question is, where do, you know, different inputs to the board come from? And so I appreciate the specificity and the data that we can get from the superintendent and the community intent that we get through other side of the listening.
Well, and I would imagine we could make point out that educational needs would also fall to the superintendent, which would be incorporated.
Yes.
Okay. If I see board member Bellamy, has her hand raised?
Yes, thank you. Member Lessons, thank you for tagging this one. Not looking at our policies for three years or so, you know, only looking at it for every three years. But I was actually really glad to see that you gave some thought to which were similar thoughts that I had to adjusting this part of our policy to better reflect what we actually do. So I'm all for it. I think it's long overdue, but I think it's very timely that we can get to do this now at the beginning of the year and make sure that you know, we are to just solidify the way we are doing business now. So thank you.
Excellent. I guess I also wanted to comment, under the roles of school board items five and, excuse me, eight, I thought that they mirrored some adjustment. You know, previously or currently, it says that the board will monitor all expenditures.
We do not.
We don't. So there are a lot of them. You know, we have our P-Card audit, and that's, you know, we can do things at that 30,000-foot level. And then when there are significant items, like, you know, rebar is missing from a school construction site in the middle of summer, and there is an additional cost, that's an appropriate example of board review of an expenditure. So I thought that a little bit of edit there is appropriate. And then item number eight, when we think about long-range plans, I thought that we should also incorporate sort of school consolidation, boundary changes into things that the board has a role in approving. So, yeah, but as member Bellamy was saying, this is bringing a policy up to date with where we are and I think where we should be.
I agree that, and I agree, this is, this change can reflect what's actually happening, which is always good. So appreciate that. Number Higgins?
Yeah, you know, recall the presentation by the Alaska Association of School Boards talking about the board is responsible for curriculum, for example. It's not reflected. We've got issues about we're doing audits. We're not reflecting that. I'd like the opportunity, before we go forward with this, or meeting with Aids, we're contacting NSDA and getting from them some input as to what they think might be issues in here. Because I don't think this reflects the curriculum because of the budget audits. And both of those, that's the accountability to the school district, and that's the direction when it comes to curriculum issues really critical.
I think I think you raise a great point, although my understanding of this it's funny, the title, Concepts and Roles, suggests a broader umbrella where something like curricula is part of the board's role. But this policy, as it was drafted, really focuses on financial roles. And I guess I'm off the top of my head, it seems like we have other policies that speak to the board's role in curricula. So I don't know whether the policy should be reading to rather than Concepts and Roles, to something like
Yeah, it's read this.
Physical line in Concepts and Roles.
I mean, there is Concepts and Roles under, like, Article Six where it's instruction. So you have Concepts and Roles in each one of these articles.
Okay.
That might live.
Okay.
So this is just a business and non-instructional concepts and roles that you're
So non-instructional. So it is, okay. Okay, so BP 3000 lives in the non-instructional and business side of things.
Right. And then in the other articles, there are the Concepts and Roles that associate those to the policy.
So the audit, though, we call it strategically financial as well as operational audit.
I would agree too, yeah.
So that should be reflected, I think, in this particular document.
Once in item six, under the rules of the board, seems like a good place for it to live.
Just say reviews the annual audit of district accounts and business procedures.
But maybe if we tweaked.
Into the word audits.
It needs to be that the board has, you know, a vote in directing audits, operational audits. Because that's really what the operational audit is all about. It's not done, we come up with an idea, then the administration takes it over, and we never see it again.
So can, if this language, member Higgins, were to say reviews annual audits, as member Lessons suggested, would that resolve your concern?
You can say identify.
Change it to say that the board, well, what we're doing is we're conducting, the board has the authority to conduct, to direct and conduct audits, or direct audits to be conducted, reporting to the board, not to the administration. Because we want to make sure it's independent of the administration if we're asking for an audit. That's the way the internal
So we could propose language of saying
It could be like we changed.
Identify conducts and reviews with that.
I don't think the word conducts, but the board identifies and reviews annual audits.
Yeah, I was just, I was translating member Higgins' thoughts into words.
But we're directing the audit through a third party, okay? Let's say the Council of Grace's schools, for example. They've done that with purchasing, we've done that with a whole bunch of stuff within it. But reporting to the board is what that audit is doing. That's the point I want to make sure. Otherwise, it doesn't cover the scope of what we wanted. We've been through this, and I don't want to see that again in the bloodstream. So that's what my concern is at. So it would be a, we review annual audits. That's true. We do that as well, because a lot of those audits are not conducted by the board.
No, they're not annual. This one's actually specifically referring to our district financial audit videos.
And if we put financial, that's fine. If we've got language error, we put the other language, and that's okay. But I just didn't want to see that restricted again.
Right, because then wouldn't all be annual, like the purchasing audit we're not going to do every year.
Like, purchasing special, curriculum, those are three big audits.
Can we go back to number Lessons, that will go to member Bellamy?
Okay, I appreciate the feedback, and the clarification would suggest that for item six, it would read as current with the addition, so it would read reviews the annual audit of district accounts and business procedures and directs and reviews additional audits as needed.
Operational audits, yeah. Conduct and reviews. Because also would be operational audits. We wouldn't do after financial, we'd review on the
Would only have the internal audit too.
The internal audit, we'd have city even do it, the community can do it.
Would it be wise to reference our audit plan? Because maybe that encompasses everything, because everything we audit should be on the plan?
And prepares an audit plan.
Right. Maybe I think that might be the best vehicle, because then we don't have to describe the specific process besides just referencing the plan. I'm thinking ahead of finance today, when that's a topic of discussion.
Okay, so maybe you could say reviews the annual audit of district accounts and business procedures and approves an annual audit plan.
I like that.
I'm not a member of the committee.
And any, member Higgins, any objection to that?
So they would say, read as it stands, reviews the annual audit of district accounts and business procedures and approves an annual audit plan.
That, to me, is inadequate. But we had last time, we had a plan done that we wanted to have, let's say, board concerns. We want to be in charge of making sure that the board is playing a role. That's what we've always done. So that we have a say-so in the scope of that audit. If we can talk to the auditor while before the process is done, that didn't happen. And I don't want to see that happen. I don't want to approve a plan that they're doing and exercising it without any involvement with the board. That's what we don't want to do. We didn't do that in the past, and I certainly don't want to do that again after last year.
I would just say that could be, that scope could be part of the plan, would be my thought. But we'll go to member Bellamy.
She put her hand down.
Oh.
My comments were brought up already. Thank you.
Great, okay. So I, what I would submit, member Higgins, is if we, if we work collaboratively with administration to implement an audit plan, that your concerns could be addressed through that process, would be my thought. Member Wilson, the other member of the committee. Member Lessons just drafted on the fly some language regarding the audits and audit plan. Do you feel comfortable with adding that and moving this policy forward, or would you like to revisit this on another note?
Since I'm not in person for this particular meeting, I would like your recommendation on that. I would, I should say, I would follow your recommendation for that one.
Okay, yeah, I'm personally comfortable with moving this forward. We can always discuss a minor amendment. I'm not hearing any other large-scale amendments, and so if you're comfortable with that recommendation, we'll move forward. Is that okay?
Yes, that works.
Perfect, okay. Appreciate the feedback and discussion. Thank you, member Lessons, for moving our procedure in this area into reality and what's actually happening. Thank you. And we'll move that forward to President Holman for placement on an agenda where it can be considered a non-action, action calendar amended if need be. Our last item under the routine review is BP 3100, Budgets. Any suggested edits in regard to BP 3100? Okay. Hearing seeing none, thank you, everyone. For helping us accomplish our first agenda item.
I remember this committee, like it did, I do think that the process we used last year for the budget, where we had two public hearings, compared to this one, was really positive. And that policy only calls for one hearing.
With regard to having that third meeting at the end of February?
I think that was very helpful.
I, I'm also not a member of the committee. I think I remember having this conversation that it was it was a huge asset to board members to have the time to reflect on significant amount of community input. I know it made life a little bit more challenging for the finance team at the end. I wonder if the policy, could you pull up 3100 again, please?
That could also be addressed to, like, calendar, if we, like, calendar those a little tighter together.
Right.
That was, that was going to be my remark, because what I recall was a challenging piece was how late the process drove on, not how many days there were.
Right, like the number of meetings.
We always have
The final day.
We always have the budget available, at least, we've always had it available twice, right, as non-action and as action. And to me, I hear, I see this as a, almost a separate public hearing. And I think when I look back at prior administration, during the Carol Cuomo administration, there were sometimes multiple days of hearings and opportunities for public input. So perhaps that needs a little more granular clarity.
The other thing I'll say is, a public hearing can and regularly can be continued. So the Assembly, the Anchorage Assembly, for example, will continue a public hearing to multiple meetings. And so to avoid wordsmithing, when this might not be required, I would note that if we, you know, if we, as a governing body, continue a public hearing on our budget, that would accomplish the same thing while being in a hearing with this language here. Just want to throw that out. That hearing is really, can speak to a process and not one. Member Donnelly, what are your thoughts on that?
It's like we, I was superior the way we did it this year.
Is there someone who's interested in proposing a change to this language, knowing we can't come back to it? This is certainly the last chance for us to amend it. I don't see any comments online, so we'll recognize that we value additional public input in regard to our budgets, and we will move on. Thank you, everyone. Item B1 is complete. Move on to B2, BP 6115, Ceremonies and Observances. This was an item that came from governance, was heard at a school board meeting, and then referred to governance for additional review. The task of the agenda, and here in the room, available for those online, are a couple different versions for consideration. The version from member Donnelly, which was referred to a board meeting for action, then referred back to governance. Some feedback from the lessons, and then a proposed revision that I prepared to be considered as a committee substitute to move forward back to the board for potential review in action. I, well, we'll start, I guess, member Don, this is your proposal. Do you have any opening remarks before we act as a committee and move forward?
Just to recap, this was introduced a year and a half ago or more. Going through, I'm a little lost track now of how many committee meetings, but there's also the at the request of the committee, subject of a review by the administration who made some recommendations, were adopted by the committee. And the final version was supported by the administration as it comes back to the committee today. I think the biggest issue with the current policy is it lacks specificity. And if you're not specific, schools don't do it. And it's a shame, but that's the way it's happened. It happens. Um, and it's a shame, but that's the way it's happened, it happens. Um, all the pressures that are out there for everything else they do. So once the proposal has been referred back, has some very specific requirements. They are not time consuming in any way, shape or form. They're very seconds or minutes, uh, a limited number of days in the year. And yet it would guarantee that at least our students have that the minimalist exposure to these particular patriotic events and activities. Um, it is a return to a small amount of what was present in our schools, um, back in time. And I think it should be adopted as it is put forward to the board as it appears in the committee today, sent back to you.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Um, Member Lessons, did you want to provide context on your feedback or, or, um, talk through your thoughts on the current, um, board policy before we move on to the, um, committee substitute?
Sure, uh, thanks. So back in June, following the move, uh, from the board meeting back to governance, um, I spent some time considering, um, some potential, uh, ways to strengthen the policy. Um, and, uh, when I emailed it, I noted that I hope my substitute can be helpful for the committee's consideration or for committee members to perhaps amend it further as needed. And I think that this further amendment, um, builds on, um, some of the items that I suggested. Um, but also, uh, I really like that, um, schools will be able to, um, ensure that they try to exercise their timely, meaningful, and relevant to all students. Um, you know, when I think about the National Anthem itself and sort of the last couple of lines, it really, truly, they end in a question. You know, say does that, you know, star sprinkled banner yet wave, right? When you think about it, it is asking people to, to reflect on it. What is the ongoing meaning of the anthem? And I think that the opportunity for sites, for schools, for classrooms to do just that, um, I think that gets to the heart of, of, of this notion of patriotism. Um, so I, I think that, uh, I appreciate the process of, uh, the policy as it has evolved. Sometimes take, sometimes policies take a long time. The wellness policy took a really long time. This one is maybe also a record setter. Um, but I, I think that policy that may come out at the end, um, will allow individual schools to do the best for our students.
Thank you, Members, appreciate the comments and perspective. Um, so you all speak to the, this committee substitute version, um, that is also attached to the agenda. It does its best to incorporate kind of all the feedback that has been expressed by the board, both in committee meetings as well as, um, in our business meetings. Um, I really wanted to tip my cap to Member Donnelly, who referenced, um, additional, uh, days of recognition and things like the Alaska Flag Song, which the board should encourage, um, schools to celebrate and acknowledge. Um, I also appreciated the JROTC battalion language, which I think is excellent. I, I know some of our schools unengage the JROTC program. And if we can expand that, um, where possible, I fully support it. Uh, the other thing that it really tries to, to do is to note that, uh, as Member Lessons said, not all of our schools, um, have, you know, our, our schools have dramatically different student bodies depending upon where they exist in the municipality and what, um, is most meaningful to the students in engaging in, um, civic and patriotic exercises, uh, may differ, um, in terms of what students will remember. Um, I personally said the pledge every day at school. Um, but what I remember most was having a professional, um, actor in grade school who played Uncle Sam come and give a, a speech. Um, and I think we had a Benjamin Franklin following up shortly thereafter and talking in the assembly. Um, and that just hearing and seeing what, what folks, um, of that period dressed like and spoke like was fascinating. Maybe do some, um, some book reading, because Google wasn't a thing then, dating myself just a bit. So, um, I think it provides schools some flexibility, uh, while acknowledging, um, the intent of, um, increasing repeatable, um, civic engagement and patriotic exercises. And also, um, ensures that activities are agent development, uh, agent developmentally appropriate, which we're always have an eye on as a district, but makes that explicit and clear in the board policy. So those are the thoughts there. Um, I would encourage the committee to move forward, um, the committee substitute version of BP six-one-one-five. Um, we'll start with you, Member Higgins, in the room. Do you have a perspective as to if you agree with that recommendation of sending the committee substitute version back to President Holloman for the full board's consideration?
I have no problem.
Okay. Member Wilson, do you have any, um, perspective or, um, objection to sending the committee substitute version forward to President Holloman for the full board review at a business meeting?
I, I have no objection to that either.
Great, okay. Any additional comments on this item before we move on with our agenda? Hearing and seeing none, oh, Member Donnelly.
So yours. Now that the committee substitute is before us, Mr. Chairman, I'd comment on that. Um, committee substitute, um, one of our students could go through an entire year, be in every class that year, never hear the National Anthem. He didn't have to go to the sports event or some other activity where it was played, he might never hear it. Um, he could be in class all year, every day, and never hear the Alaska Flag Song. And this, this proposal, as it's put forward here. There's no recognition of Pearl Harbor Day, there's no recognition of nine eleven. There's no recognition of President's Day in this proposal. Um, I believe by lacking specificity is the same as allowing schools to do nothing, which is exactly what they've chose to do in cases around our district, as we know from past surveys that they've been doing years, years ago, even, four or five years ago. So that's just some of my oppositions to the committee substitute.
Appreciate the comments, yeah, um, and, and thank you for the feedback, Member Donnelly. Um, I'll note that, um, one of this process, I believe, began, um, in part due to your, um, visiting a school and, and sitting in an atrium, um, kind of alone and noticing that you didn't hear, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance broadcast over speakers and, and then receiving feedback that that was done kind of at a classroom level. And so I'll note that putting something in a board policy, um, does not necessarily make it so everywhere a hundred percent of the time. And so I think the question that the committee should grapple with, and the board should grapple with is, is putting words to paper, going to ensure that, um, schools are implementing meaningful civic engagement, patriotic exercises, or is encouragement, follow through, and ensuring that things are both meaningful, timely, and age appropriate for students the best way forward to ensure that things like the Alaska Flag Song, um, incidents like nine one one are celebrated in our buildings. And so, um, we, we as school board members are not physically present in buildings every day. Um, there are seven of us and, um, you know, roughly ninety buildings that, um, ASD has jurisdiction over. And so, um, I think the best path forward is to find something that's sustainable and meaningful for both staff and our students and our families that celebrates the items that we all hold dear. So I think this presents the best path forward, um, while also making it, um, relevant and, uh, realistic. Um, so I think that's, that's what, I guess, how I would respond. Uh, Member, uh, Dr. Brian, I guess, a question for you regarding, uh, from administrative perspective. Does this current version provide administration with guidance it can take to building leadership to implement the things that are both identified in this policy by name as well as referenced, uh, potentially under the, uh, not limited to language? And so do you have what you need to make it clear to building leadership that the board wants civic engagement and patriotic exercises engaged in and feasible?
I believe so. Are there any other barriers that our team members can identify that would prevent that? So that is the question, Ken.
Okay. So not hearing any, uh, concerns from the administration, um, any other discussion before the committee moves on? Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate the conversation and we'll have this in front of us at a future board meeting. Right, we next have, uh, B three, which is BP one-three-one-two dot one, Public Complaints Concerning School Personnel. Is this an administration item? Or is this something that a board member flagged?
I believe I have requested that in this, it's the last moment of my memory. I think this came up, um, during the audit that we did on employee complaints, um, as they were doing the review of existing board policies. Um, it was noted that there's housekeeping language in, uh, thirteen twelve dot one that was not removed, uh, when this policy was adopted.
Correct.
When we converted over to the AASB series of policies. So the top portion is the, um, policy as it was proposed by AASB. Like many policies that were put forward at the time, it included an optional section at the end. It had a prompt to let the board know that it was optional, that, that prompt was never removed. So, uh, long story short, I think this is just a housekeeping item to remove that language.
Sure, okay. Understood, appreciate that. Any objections to this housekeeping item?
Yeah, certainly. Is the recommendation to delete everything, uh, in the last two paragraphs, when public complaints and this policy, is that?
How I read this is only the language highlighted would be.
Oh, okay, true. Okay, my, uh, I think the other parts of it are really sloppy, actually. Um, in the second paragraph, it says though a district may implement some complaint procedures in such cases. I mean, it's our district, it's our policy. And we encourage school districts. Who's the we and what school districts are we referring to? So, um, I would respectfully and out of, you know, time, say, let's work on this over the next couple of weeks. And then maybe just a quick delete, I mean, I, you have, I'm not on the committee, so I shouldn't do this, but, um, I don't, I just think that there's, we could talk about it right now.
Well, and if I, if I might, Member Lessons, what I think I'm hearing is that, that you're not interested in seeing substantive changes to what the policy says as much as clarifying rules.
Clarifying.
Um, voice and some of the, some of the housekeeping.
Yes, there's some has to be. And then in the first paragraph, where it says verbal complaints against an employee initially made to a school board member or at a school board meeting will be referred to the superintendent. It's my understanding that we discourage members of the public from making verbal complaints against identifiable employees at school board meetings. So I just don't know how those two things reconcile. So I just, my takeaway was this is sloppy for ASD policy and it should be worked on.
Okay. Um, what I can, I can do is I can take a, um, a red pen to this and bring it back for our next meeting with some changes that reflect what's actually happening. If there's a desire to change anything, in reverse, our current process is more of a, a project to have policy match what's actually going on. Member Higgins.
Yeah, there were a number of changes I think I would like to be able to submit consideration on this one. It has, I mean, this is going to stay up, we'll say it's all ASD employees, right? Uh, not much sure what that means. Uh, then the question becomes one, obviously, if it's an illegal thing that if we pray to law enforcement, because we're not going to interfere in their investigation, that's been something that's happened in the past way long time ago, when it was, it was kind of a messy one, it got all over the place. And, um, uh, then it becomes one of whether the board will get some sort of summary report types of complaints, could you order to be logging and tracking those? That we could get something that would be meaningful, say what types of issues? We don't want to deal with employees, can't be involved in violation, um, of the municipal charter for us to be involved, but getting an idea of what types of issues are out there would be appropriate. So there's a lot of things in here that could be added. And I don't know, um, you know, the, the question is chain of command. How do you end up raising it up to how we can go to the superintendent? But does every complaint from an employee go immediately to the superintendent? What is your goal? So there's a lot of questions in here that I have in regards to what you're trying to do, and I'd like to have some clarity.
Um, Member Higgins, would September twelfth be sufficient time for you to review this policy and submit changes to myself as chair that we can incorporate to a version and bring back on September twenty-sixth?
Yeah, I think I can get it done.
Okay. Um, so last, we'll have kind of a quasi amendment deadline for, uh, this revision of nine twelve. Please send your revisions to me and C.C. Miss Sullivan, and we'll get the policy prepared for our next meeting on that twenty-sixth. Miss Sullivan, if you could note that we want to add this one for agenda items in September.
Yes.
Any additional conversation on BP thirteen twelve dot one? Great, hearing, seeing none, we'll move on to BP five-one-three-eight, Student Possession and Use of Portable Electronic Devices, Including Cell Phones. I know this one's especially timely, I saw a recent ADN article. Yeah, about it. So, uh, Member Lessons, I believe you're, um, this may be something you have expertise in based on our project. Feel free to take the floor.
Expertise is a subjective term at this point, but familiarity is maybe a better word. Um, I started thinking about the role and place of cell phones and many other personal electronic devices some time ago. You know, most notably after a conversation with educator who was really concerned about earbuds. And I realized that we don't have any policy governing earbuds. And when you go into a school or a classroom, sometimes you see, you know, a sleeve of maybe like repurposed shoes, containers, sort of plastic sleeves, and, you know, sometimes the kids will have to put a cellphone in there. Um, other times, you know, you just see kids on the back totally tuned out of what they're supposed to be doing. Um, so we have certainly talked about student mental health. We have certainly talked about student outcomes. Um, there is a surge of interest across the nation in, um, better supporting our student, student outcomes, uh, and wellbeing through regulation of devices which, um, I don't think in our school settings truly support, uh, student learning. So, um, you know, I'm familiar, so I spent some time this summer, uh, thinking about our current policy, which was last revised in twenty-twelve, um, long before things like earbuds existed, long before Chromebooks, uh, which are portable, but not personal electronic devices, um, really came to be. Um, and so I have, you know, taken an initial crack at the policy and looking forward to just, uh, sort of more of a one-on-one meeting with administration. Um, including, you know, representative or representatives from SED, I mean, special education. Um, I think IT might have some thoughts. Um, I think that there might be legal concerns. Um, there's certainly medical concerns, some devices are used for, for legitimate medical reasons. Um, I think English language learners, you know, there could be something, maybe there are practices in use where cell phones are really important, um, that I'm not aware of. And I think that was actually a thought that I had following, uh, my creation of this policy or my, my initial revision of the policy. Um, but I'm also aware that, um, Connecticut, um, just came out with sort of a model policy. Um, I believe that Virginia has some guidelines. So I think that there are a lot of points of input that I envision gathering. I love to hear what educators think. I imagine they don't really want to be policemen and policewomen. They'd rather just focus on the business of teaching. So how can, how can the board support the business of teaching and learning in a classroom setting? Um, I know that there are, you know, fancy couches for twenty or twenty-five dollars a pop. Well, we've got forty-something thousand students, maybe half of them have cell phones. All of a sudden, you know, that's a half million dollars of back of the envelope, you know, investment. I don't know that we need couches in ASD, but by golly, secondary, you know, students have access to walkers or, you know, elementary kiddos, they've got little cubbies, but at very least they have backpacks. So I think that we could have, um, and I, I guess I envision a nuanced policy that, you know, protects our youngest learners as best we can from distractions. Um, and, and some legitimate safety concerns, um, that perhaps allows our high school students, you know, a little bit more discretion and independence. We have open lunches. You know, if I were the parent of a student driving off campus in January, I'd want, you know, that student to have access to her phone, um, in case they spin out on the ice. Um, I think that there are legitimate reasons that students in high school may need to have access to a cellphone at a certain point in the day. But, you know, um, there are probably good reasons, like in some of our middle schools, where, uh, this year they're putting them off and away all day. So I guess I, I appreciate you calendaring this as an initial discussion. I'd be interested in hearing what other board members' values are. Um, and, and I, I will be interested in soliciting educator feedback, principal feedback. Um, I think that this is something that the board has, uh, the potential to really do the right thing. And I think that this is something that the board has the potential to really do the right thing on, but I think it's going to take a little bit of time and I don't want to be so I guess maybe you'll open the floor for other board members' general general sense.
Right. So I saw, we're going to remember Higgins first, and then I seen Mr. Race.
Yeah, I appreciate this subject coming up because it's really timely. With A I and with everything else going on, this is going to be a hot subject. I know the NSBA conference is focused on A I this time, and I imagine Cuba is too. And it's going to be developing all kinds of ways. So there's some language in here like that says portable electronics, it may be approved. I'd rather say all use of anything must be pre-approved. I mean, it was at that point. Because that, then they can say it's a general rule, this is lawful, it's allowed by teacher, but then they've got the ground rules there. So if you got something new and you haven't got it pre-approved, tough luck. I talked to one principal at a high school and talked about the number of people that were using A I to bypass double exams in the finals last year, and they had half the kids involved in that. So it's, it's timely with this. I don't think we're going to eliminate A I from being in our future. How it should be implemented, I don't know, but I like strong language in here. I would, like I said, change it to say must be pre-approved by the building administrator, teacher, or something like that, because I really do want control of this one for the sake of the school. And school wants to say, I don't care if you have cell phones, it's elementary, because your calls from home, that's fine, but I just want it pre-approved in advance. And I think we're going to have to address A I somewhere in here as well. And I don't know what to do with that until we see, like you said, Virginia or some other places, what they've done to try to address this issue, because it's out of control. And I just don't know when it stops. But I, I appreciate that this, this being brought up. It's great timing.
Member Lessons, any feedback before we move on to other comments?
Well, as I'm, I'm looking forward to more comments, but it would be interesting to know whether sort of the wide, the ubiquity of cell phones in our schools and the nuances that are that have to be, you know, taken into account at the different age levels in different contexts. I just wonder if there could be some utility in establishing something like another, like an ad hoc committee to better bring different stakeholder input together before bringing something back to a governance committee or I don't know, I'm just, I'm thinking about this on my feet right now. I wonder if that could be a productive space to, to best prepare a substantial policy revision.
I'll jump, I'll jump on the stage really quickly before I forget the thought. Say that the, as I was thinking through your engagement process, I was wondering it might be timely, we're still drafting a policy to engage families. So I'm thinking like through, yeah, I'm thinking maybe just a, an op ed from where we did, we did the lifting of the board, and all seven board members signed on to a, a two-sentence op ed saying, we're thinking about this. Please send us feedback. Here's the board email address. Taking notes aside the policy of the way, just asking for feedback. It could certainly, we'll certainly have our non-action, action agenda, and maybe it's not a good fit as an idea, but I feel the more feedback we get on the front end, this is, this will be a board-driven policy. So as much as we can take the lead on it and take some of that engagement work off of administration seems to be an easy list and something that's reasonable. But we can chew on that. We'll go to Mr. Race.
I was wondering, you know, with some of our schools implementing no phone policy, I imagine you're budgeting with that, but maybe not because of use of other Chromebooks. Are we looking at any data points, specific data points to look at? I mean, there's lots of anecdotal accounts, but anything we could look at data-wise as, as these schools implement that policy?
I think, well, just a quick note in regards to that, I, I was tracking incidents of aggression and related students' suspension data. I believe it was at Menlo last year, which rolled out the policy for the first time. And I believe that those figures looked favorably year over year. Because I was asked the same question. But I think it's something for us to examine. Sure. Member Lessons?
I believe that the, the survey that's connected by Panorama.
My connect.
So that one, yes. I mean, I think that that one has a lot of potentially valuable data points about the extent to which students feel connected to either one another, to staff. Are they able to make those meaningful? Another one, it's just purely anecdotal. I have a middle schooler and last year, cell phones were allowed at the lunchroom table, and this year they are not. And the five kids that I drive in our carpool on the mornings said something to the effect of this year lunchroom is really loud. So that's a student anecdotal, but they were, you know, in a way, they were happy that their friends were not doing this at the table, but instead better or worse, you know, the decibels are rising. So you could probably measure that.
Although the, we, we overhauled fifty, forty, we specifically gave a nod to guarantee lunchtime. And this, it could dovetail and maximize that change too.
Member Wilson and President Holman both have their handles.
Great. Okay. We'll go to Member Wilson and President Holman.
No, I just wanted to jump in and say that in, in general, I, I absolutely support our schools and our principals who are choosing not to have cell phones in the classroom. And I've, I've talked to a couple who have had positive feedback in, in the students' engagement and the students' decrease in, in bullying because cell phones can be used for that as well. So i- in general, I, I absolutely support it. I would like, I, I know I've heard from several regarding feedback. I, I would love to hear from the principals that are rolling this out, that have rolled this out through the administration. So I would like that feedback. So thank you for, for bringing this, this topic up, though.
And President Holman, for your.
Yeah, you know, we've had a, a few schools that have done a little bit of pushback on this, but this year we seem to have a number of high schools that are really implementing some policy that the kids are going to notice. And what I'm thinking is if we give this three or four months until we get feedback from them, we may feel like there's a need for an overarching policy that kind of dictates or latitude. And, and what I would hate for us to do is put in policy to keep someone from being innovative, in essence. I, I don't think very many of the schools have exactly the same policy. They've got a lot of overlap, but I think they, they each have a little bit of differences in it. I, I would advocate that we wait. I don't think they need anything from us to do what they're doing. And if they did, I'd hope the administration would bring that to us. But otherwise, after principals have had a little bit of time to digest it, interact with families directly on their policy, and kind of coalesce. And some principals may say, we, we tried this and it really wasn't workable, or people were very unhappy. I, I think that would give us the opportunity to make the best policy that, that empowers our local site managers, our, our principals, and takes their feedback into effect. So I, I don't want the board to come down with something too soon.
A clarifying question, President Holman, for me. Do you think that there's a way to craft a policy that both expresses a value? I'm thinking about the patriotic exercises policy we just observed. Our, our board policies are kind of riddled with the use of the phrase the board encourages, where we express a value and then leave the how to administration. I'm just wondering if there's a way to pass a policy sooner than later, saying that this is what we value, which is, I mean, assuming we do collectively adopt it, saying that we should limit electronic usage in, in X, Y, Z cases where we allow those plans to be submitted from building leadership to district administration and provide a flexibility you're referencing while also expressing the value from the board at the same time. Is that a path forward? Or do you, do you really see the best path forward as waiting a few months?
Well, I think with the number of people we have in this meeting that are expressing a positive outlook on buildings, putting policy in place, the superintendent can relay that he's not hearing any objections from any board members about what they're doing. I, I'm not hearing that. I don't, I don't think any of us do. So I, I think they're able to go ahead and, and make this change. And, and I think some of them will probably hit some speed bumps that they don't want to repeat, maybe, or maybe not. But at that point, I would like to know from principals first, do they, do they want a very broad policy from us that just enables them to do something if they want to, or possibly not? Or do they feel like the board would be helping them if we enacted something fairly specific? I, I don't know that we need to have the same policy in all our buildings. But we might. And that's the kind of feedback I would like to, to know from the principals through the superintendent. And then craft our policy based on that. I mean, this, I think this is moving ahead without us having to do anything at the moment. And I don't think we're holding anybody back. So my inclination would be to wait a little bit.
But Member Lessons, on the break.
You know, one of the things that the current policy states is that the principal may establish and school personnel may enforce additional guidelines limiting or prohibiting the possession and use of portable electronic devices as appropriate to campus needs. So I feel like that, I mean, that right there to me is the piece that is currently allowing, you know, Wendler and South were both cited in the recent newspaper article. Other schools are, are doing things. The question is, what, and the one question I have is, what is every school doing? We also have a lot of elementary school students. I can tell you again, anecdotally, from, you know, walking my kids to the bus stop, that years ago, when one student, she was fifth or sixth grader at the time, got a cell phone, you know, she was, you know, all of a sudden, instead of playing before the bus came, she was just connected to her phone. And the other kiddos at the bus stop, you know, continued their revelry. But she was just tuned out. She was not, she was not present. My point being, I don't know if any elementary schools have cell phone policies. I really don't want to see them on the playground, for example. But, you know, also, you know, things like smartwatches are, are present too. So I think in teeth, in thinking about what President Holman is, is asking for, which is a genuine opportunity, a genuine opportunity for principals to provide feedback, I wonder whether maybe at the end of the first quarter, all of our principals could be surveyed about, you know, A, whether they have a specific policy, you know, and B, what their feedback is on anything that they may have implemented over, you know, this year, last year. And I wonder whether sort of the end of Q one would be an appropriate time for feedback. I, I think that policies take time to craft. And I think that, you know, leading until the end of the first semester may, may not be needed, but maybe we do need some time this first quarter for staff to be able to generate substantive feedback.
Mr. Gills.
I, I want Kirsten to have an opportunity to say, because this has been a topic at our meetings throughout this fall. So you want to for South and Wendler giving feedback, that's the whole end of the first quarter, I think.
Yeah. So I think you, you have highlighted that a number of schools have implemented new policies. To the elementary kind of comment, a majority of elementary schools, I mean, without surveying them, pretty much the policy at elementary is put away all day. It's not something that's out during the day for instructional use or you know, on the playground or anything like that. Most, most of the rubs come usually at the secondary level with kids who really want to use their devices in school. There's been a number of schools this year that have done survey work with their communities to talk about what parents' opinions are around electronic devices, would they support a kind of a no cellphone policy essentially? And the thought process for a lot of our secondary folks is that there are Chromebooks now, like that was noted earlier. So cell phones as an instructional tool aren't necessary per se because we have a one-to-one device kind of situation in our district at the secondary level. So if you need to access something online, you have a device that you can do that way. A majority of the policies that have kind of been implemented this year are, cell phones are, are put away until the end of the day. And maybe only available at lunchtime. That's a variance from school to school. Some schools have them put away completely at lunchtime. You can have them as you walk in the building, you put them in your locker, you lock them away, you pick them up at the end of the day. There are some schools that will allow students to use them at lunchtime as well. So that's kind of the general gist. AirPods or earbuds are another thing. There are a number of schools that have started going to either a no earbud policy while they're walking around the building, or if they do have an earbud and it's only in one ear so that they can still hear directions or things of that nature. And so, so there is variance, but there has been a lot of parent support generally at this point, mostly because of the distraction factor from the task at hand, which is school. And so they see it, we haven't heard a, a huge amount of pushback on new cell phone policies rolling out this, this fall so far, so.
Great. Thank you for the feedback. We're getting close on time. So I'll give Mr. Base the last word as he does hand raise and we'll.
I, whatever policy you guys consider, I would love to see a balance between the elimination, removal of the item and the proper teaching and learning of when it's appropriate to use.
There's a balance. It was a great conversation. Thank you, everyone. I'm sure that gives Member Lessons more than enough feedback to move forward and we'll add this to our agenda in coordination going forward. With that said, it is twelve oh one. We will adjourn our committee meeting. Thank you.